Good afternoon. This is August fourteenth, two thousand point three two, on the plan. It includes twenty multi-plant.
What would you stipulate of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, God, and to the liberty of justice?
Please make sure your mics are on when you talk, the little red button.
How about that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
It's Pi Day. It is Pi Day, Pi R squared, you learn that in high school algebra. Just saying.
Thank you.
Don't celebrate anything.
If anyone is here from the city that would like to speak on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. Each individual item will have a public comment section where people from the public are allowed to speak.
Can I start out there?
I don't recognize you, sir. Name an address for the record.
Brian Nelson, eleven fifty-seven Oak Point Circle, Apopka, Florida. We are here to recognize one of your planning commission members who's been on the planning commission for eight years now and given us wonderful service to the city in a lot of other ways. And so I've got some flowers for her, but first, before I do that, I want to read a proclamation for a good friend of all of us here in the room, especially to the planning commission. To our good friend Linda Lorindo. And the proclamation reads, whereas Linda Lorindo was raised in the Wakefield Melrose area of Massachusetts, and whereas Ms. Lorindo moved to Florida in the nineties and has lived in Apopka for over thirty years, and whereas she is a registered parliamentarian with the state of Florida, and whereas Linda is a member of the VFW Auxiliary and spearheaded efforts with Loretta Forlaw to identify veterans buried in the city's Edgewood Greenwood Cemetery to honor those who served in the annual Reads Across America ceremony, and whereas she received the Service to Mankata Award in two thousand twenty-one from the Follett Sartoma Club of Apopka for her efforts with the Veterans Identification Project and is now a member of Sartoma as well, and whereas Linda is a member of the Apopka Women's Club and is a dedicated volunteer every year for the Art and Foliage Festival, and whereas she is the original charter member of the Northwest Orange Republican Federated, and whereas Linda is a poll worker for the Orange County Supervisor of Elections Office, and whereas Linda is a board member for the Neighborhood Restorative Justice Program where she works the first-time juvenile offenders in the Orange County Juvenile Court System, and whereas she is a member of the Saint Francis of Assisi of Apopka and has been a church volunteer for many years, and whereas Linda is considered by many to be a great humanitarian, a tireless volunteer, and most of all, a true friend to those close to her. And whereas Linda has served on the city's planning commission for the past eight years, and tonight is her final meeting. Now, therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby commend Linda Lorindo, not only for her years of service on the planning commission, but for the community at large, and ask all citizens to join with me in extending the deepest appreciation to Linda.
Well, thank you so much, everybody. I love you all. If I had to choose one, it would be a task I couldn't complete. The reason I'm stepping down now is because I was unfortunate enough to want to go to Italy a couple of years ago and had to take a booster shot, which I didn't want to do. And the day after I took the booster shot, I pulled up to the stop sign by my house, didn't know who I was, where I was, and it didn't get much better. And so I finally figured out that if I started removing myself from a lot, I've resigned from restorative justice, and I think we were, when it came to Apopka, I know myself and somebody else, I have no names, were the first people who would go down and adjudicate these juveniles so they would get a second chance at life, and all the other things that I've been a part of. It's just been wonderful, but I can't overload myself like that. I say, let me, you know, I'll say, let me check my brain, which is my phone, and I'll have three and four meetings the same day. I can't do that anymore. And I'm working through my eightieth year, and so it's time for me to step back and let somebody else become, you know, workaholics. So, and I, and this is one of my most fun things to do every month. It's never dull. So there's always something going on, and I've met so many incredible people, and I, that doesn't mean I won't be on the other side of the dais. So we'll see what happens. So I thank you so much. I mean, it's, it's been just phenomenal.
Thank you, Linda. You'll be sorely missed here. I assure you, you will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
All right.
Maybe we should take all of our pay this evening and donate it to Linda.
That's right. We're going to donate our salaries to Linda.
That's right. Ooh, bring in the truckload.
All right. Item number one, comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use, CFX property. Owner: Central Florida Expressway Authority. Applicant: Central Florida Expressway Authority. Location: Southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road four twenty-nine. Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the Future Land Use Amendment for CFX property from county rural to industrial. The subject property is located in the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road four twenty-nine, approximately six acres in size. The proposed future land use designation of industrial is compatible with the area because adjacent properties to the northwest and south have future land use designations of same. The applicant is also requesting to amend the zoning district of the subject property from County A one to IL light industrial zoning district, which is the next item on the agenda and is consistent with the proposed industrial future land use designation. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed future land use amendment for CFX property. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Doody.
What were they going to do with this property?
This is actually, the request is in conjunction with the development plan being reviewed by the Development Review Committee right now for an industrial complex, an industrial center. It's essentially an extension of mid-Florida to the north. I'm not sure if you're familiar with where.
Yeah, that's where Amazon Coca-Cola is, just across the border there, where it says industrial right now on the northern side. And they'll still be using this portion for drainage, but it's, but they can't use it as CFX, so what they're doing is swapping this property with another piece of property to the south, so there's actually a border of conservation and open space land next to our birding park. So the purpose is so that, again, they can use this as part of their drainage for their project, but we're able to maintain a lot more environmental properties on the southern, just south of this, next to the birding park, which is all in green under listed as PR. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good move.
Okay, so now it's a retention pond, but you're saying it's going to stay retention?
It'll stay retention, but it's for the development now instead of just CFX.
Okay. I was confused because CFX is a government entity, right?
Pardon?
CFX is the government entity that runs the expressways, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Is the applicant here, and do they have a presentation? Very well.
No, there's no presentation.
No worries. Is there anyone from the public here wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman. I find the proposed change in future land use from county rural to industrial consistent with a comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented by the staff report and exhibit.
Thank you, Commissioner Lorindo. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, change of zoning, CFX property. Central Florida Expressway Authority. Owners: Applicant: Central Florida Expressway Authority. Location: Southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road four twenty-nine. Ms. Sanchez.
This is the companion application to the previous agenda item. I request to recommend approval of the change of zoning from, for CFX property from County A one Citrus Rural Zoning District to IL light industrial zoning district. Subject property is approximately a total of six acres in size. I think it states differently on your staff report, apologies for that. I think it said sixty-five instead of six. The subject property is also currently vacant but adjacent to industrial uses. The IL light industrial district is compatible with the surrounding areas due to the same district found in the northwest and south of the subject property. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the change of zoning for CFX property. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to find a proposed CFX property, change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from County one dash A Citrus Rural Zoning Districts to one dash L Light Industrial Zoning District based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment, nine twenty-four Lake Drive. Owners: Bernice Singh, Keisha Warren. Applicants: Lounges Law Firm, care of Rebecca Wilson. Location: Nine twenty-four Lake Drive. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the future land use amendment for a portion of nine-two-four Lake Drive from residential low to mixed use, approximately point one-nine acre in size. Property is located north of Apopka Boulevard, south of Lake Drive, and west of Tilden Avenue. It's the area of the property. The existing future land use is residential low permitting up to five dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting to change the northern portion of the property to mixed use consistent with the parcel to the north permitting up to fifteen dwelling units per acre and one-point-zero floor area ratio. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the future land use amendment. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question. This elongated piece of property, they can't develop it by itself, correct?
No, it would not meet development design standards, although it would have density entitled or attached to it. It wouldn't meet any of our lot size requirements, buffer requirements, and all that, the development design standards.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Commissioner Doody.
What happens with the properties that are immediately to the west along Apopka Boulevard and immediately to the east with this? If we allow this one to go through, those other properties would also be able to claim precedent now, correct?
Well, we don't base on precedence in terms of reviewing it. We base it on compatibility.
Right.
I mean, mixed use is literally quite adjacent, west adjacent of this property. Now, DRC did have some apprehension about permitting the entire property as mixed use, but that's why the applicant has revised their application to only include the portion that they only need to develop it with the intention to combine it with the property to the north to meet their, what they needed for density.
Yeah, I don't like it.
So let me, let me ask you a question. So, so what we're doing is this will be added to the, the property to the northwest to get enough acreage so the density level that they're looking for, correct?
Correct.
So basically, this isn't going to, it's not like there's going to be any development actually on this. It was just additional acreage needed to get to that level.
That would be the ultimate result, but that's not what's for your consideration.
I understand that.
But that, that would tend to be the ultimate.
Okay. All right. Any more questions of staff?
Just, yeah, one more question. I know this has nothing to do with it, but are they going to extend Lake Drive? It kind of looks like they're trying to.
No. I don't, I don't think.
It's just going to come to that end? There's no circle there?
No, they're, they're leaving it as is. The, the end of Lake Drive right now is basically a, it's a hole.
It's a hole.
Yeah.
I mean, how is someone, when they drive down Lake Drive, how do they turn around?
I think it was just a property at the very end of it, like one person has a property over on the right side, I believe.
Because normally they have, like a cul-de-sac, they have a circle.
Yeah.
Exit or turn around.
Yeah, right now it's just kind of what's called a paper street.
On the what?
It's called a paper street. It's, it's on, it's on the paper, but it's not out there.
So what happens when a fire truck goes down there? How do they turn around?
They, they would just back up.
They would just back up.
Yeah, it's, it's a short distance. We do have a few very short cul-de-sacs that are, that are even longer than this that they would just back up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions of staff? Okay. The applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Yes.
Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Hi, I am Joseph Goshess, lines law firm in two and five. I agree with what staff has represented to the commission. I wanted to clarify a few points. So the entire property is point three-six acres. There's already a single-family home on the site that will remain on point one-seven acres, and the future land use for that half is not changing. The remaining part is point one-nine acres that is adjacent and next to the mixed-use future land use property to the northwest. That is what we are seeking, the change of future land use. The zoning of this entire area is already mixed-use, special district. The zoning was changed in about 2020, although the future land use is still relevant before the mixed-use special downtown district was established. So the zoning is specifically geared towards higher density development, both commercial and residential. And as you can see on the screen, this parcel is very oddly shaped. I've been announcing the site. Lake Drive just ends, and there is no access through Lake Drive to a larger property that this smaller parcel will be covered. It's the Southwick Commons Development, excuse me, to the northwest that has been, it's a hundred-and-ninety-five unit multifamily property. We had approvals for it. The issue was there was some miscalculation in the available acres of the larger site. So there's already a developer agreement. The larger development is very far along the tunnel process. The idea to use a portion of this property to make up for the lack of acreage was.
What was I off, was discussed with staff. We were asked to only change the future land use of the amount of acreage we needed, which is point one-nine acres, to allow three units in the, the buildings that are already designed. So there will be no development as far as the current plans go with this site. The mixed-use zoning, the mixed-use zoning district requires five thousand square feet to put one structure. The part that's remaining is about seven thousand and change, so there's no more room on the part that's remaining to put any other structure on there. So, you know, again, this is not to change the future land use of the entire site. It is just the portion that is directly adjacent to the mixed-use future land use parcel to the northwest. And again, that is to get the density for that development project, not to actually use this parcel to build any additional units. It's to make the numbers work for the development that is already in the advanced stages of review. I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission and to clarify anything if, if I wasn't clear.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Name an address for the record, please, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Dennis Puzey. I live at seven-four-four South Christina Avenue in Apopka in Charter Oaks subdivision. And I'm here on behalf of Joanna Vialante, President of Charter Oaks Homeowners Association. Joanna is unable to attend today's meeting and asks that the following statement be read into the record. Charter Oaks Homeowners Association opposes ordinance three zero 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 to amend the future land use designation on parcel ID one-five-dash-two-one-dash-two-eight-dash-two-nine-five-six-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-zero from residential to low mixed use. Joanna Vialante goes on to say Charter Oaks subdivision was just being developed and platted in nineteen seventy-nine. I live at six-five-six South Christina Avenue, and I am the original owner of this property. I've raised my two sons here, and they attended Apopka area schools. My parents, sister, and I worked together in our family business, started in nineteen sixty-four, closed in two thousand and eleven. Some may remember Roma's Restaurante Italiano located on South OBT in Apopka. I certainly do. My family and I have invested much in Apopka and greatly care about our neighborhood. Many local residents participated in the two thousand sixteen vision, visioning of Apopka in support of the original plans for Apopka city center, plans that have not materialized as promised. Instead, we've seen abuse of the mixed-use development designation to the detriment of residents who've lived here for decades. In May twenty twenty, local residents strongly opposed changing the language of ordinance number two-seven-four-seven, an amendment to policy three-point-one-point-H of the future land use element, residential high density to accommodate a maximum of twenty-five units per acre for strategic areas of Apopka. That proposal would have increased density to accommodate developers' plans to build two-hundred-and-forty-six dwelling units on thirteen acres at the corner of East Sixth Street and Alabama Avenue. We ask city officials to take careful steps to preserve the existing character of our low-density residential neighborhood as city center development unfolds. We were very grateful that they heard us and voted to keep the residential low-density designation in this area to support and preserve the development pattern and character of our established neighborhood as for section three-point-three-point-one, general purpose of residential-based zoning districts of Apopka's code. Southwick Commons continues to bully their way through the development process in Apopka. Now they want to increase density to build a hundred-and-ninety-five units where a hundred-and-ninety-two are allowed. They seek to do so by purchasing development rights on a portion of a point-three-six-acre low-density lot contiguous, contiguous to its southern border. This property on nine-two-four Lake Drive backs onto Apopka Boulevard and is part of a low-density residential neighborhood populated by single-family residences since nineteen thirty-seven. We strongly oppose such blatant manipulation of Apopka's land use codes and oppose granting any zoning change that would allow it. We implore you to stand strong with the constituents of Apopka in this matter and deny this zoning request.
Thank you, sir. Is there one, anyone else from the public which to speak on this matter? Name an address for the record, please, sir. It's okay. You're fine.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Faircloth. I reside at six-twenty East Sixth Street. And good afternoon, Commissioners.
Excuse me. Is the microphone on, sir?
Sir?
Is the microphone on?
I think so.
Yep.
Just get a little closer to him, Mr. Faircloth.
Real quick, if.
Are you raising the dais for him?
Yeah, for the, for the commission. If your mic is on, turn it off and you can hear better. It, it comes through the speaker. There you go.
What I brought to you are two sets of petitions that, one from the south side, Ninth Street, uh, Lake. Ninth Street, Lake Avenue, and where we canvassed the residents there. The other is the residents on Tilden. I have another ten from the residents of Christiana, but I don't have copies. And if you don't mind, I would prefer to hold those until the council meeting, where I'm sure we'll need to use them once again. But it's basically unanimously, everybody we've spoken to would prefer that you deny this request. The, I'm not near as eloquent as Joanna is that her statement was read earlier, but we echo the same concerns. And more importantly for us, personally, we have 1,400 feet of common property line with this development. We have inquired and others have inquired about density on our property. And we cannot get 15 units to the acre on our property due to the proximity of single-family homes on Tilden and on Christiana with Charter Oaks. Basically, staff wants a buffer area through there. And quite frankly, much as I hate to admit it, it makes perfect sense. But now what we're doing is what we cannot do with 1,400 feet, we've carved off this little sliver on the bottom and are about to let the whole density thing escape what was supposed to be city center. And so we don't know what those ramifications are going to be in five or 10 or 15 years when we need, and you know, those property owners may want to get 15 units to the acre through the south side there. Is that something we want or part of our plan? I don't know the answer to those. But at this point, with us being denied, closer to the actual point of city center, of not being able to get 15 units to the acre, I'm kind of befuddled as to why we would give them 15 units to the acre on the far side that expands this whole density precedent out. So we ask that, you know, you deny this request to keep this in the plan, keep it in the works, and hopefully it will evolve into what we have been promised for these past 20 years, from the time of the Pazuti Plan all the way through the developers' agreement to now, that not much has really transpired. And what little bit has, has not been to what we were promised when we kind of conceded to the 15 units to the acre on the property there at Alabama and Sixth. So I thank you for your time this evening, and if we can add any more to it for you, please let me know.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this matter?
Sir, I've got six more that didn't get turned in. Did you turn?
I didn't give any of them. You don't have a copy, so I'm going to need a better...
Oh, sorry. I also got...
Just introduce yourself.
Okay. Angela Pusey and I live at 744 Christiana Avenue. I also got several phone calls before I left to come to the meeting. I think there were one, two, three, four, five. There were five more of those that wanted, that couldn't be here tonight, and they didn't get it, their petition to us. So there's quite a few people.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I was just looking at this, you know. I just, I tried to look at it through the mind of how would I feel if I lived right there in those lots? And I don't like it one bit. And if there's any more, there's no more discussion, I'm fine with making a motion.
And I would concur with that. My, maybe it's a question for staff, but the gentleman had referred to a buffer zone and, you know, the MUD district. My understanding was that was we were going to have a transition from single-family residence to high-density. And this is literally surrounding three single-family homes and across the street from single-family homes and going directly from a low-density to a high-density on a border. And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the goal of the MUD was to be able to transition from maybe low-density residential to smaller residential, like maybe 1 DU, and then work our way. But we're literally going from like, I don't know if that's 1 DU or whatever those houses are, but directly to the, this high-density. Well, I understand it's a mixed use, but it just seems, doesn't seem logical to me to go from a residence directly to a 15.
Well, yeah, keep in mind, this is land use, though. It's not zoning. So the land use is going, like you just said, it's five dwelling units per acre to 15. We do have a, thank you, we do have seven and a half and 10 in between that going to the 15. So it's, it is a different, it's not, does not transition correctly.
Understood. All right. Anybody else have anything on this? All right, Commissioner Doomey, you were ready for a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make the motion to recommend this for not to be approved. So let me think of the right way to say that. I move to make the motion to find the proposed change in the future land use residential load to mixed use inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and incompatible with the character of the surrounding areas. And I recommend not approving...
Denial.
Denial, yes. Recommend denial of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in staff reports and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. Motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rendell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
The, real quick, just an update for the variance for the sign height. The applicant wanted to pull this. They have decided to go with code instead of trying to supersede code. They listened to staff's recommendation and although it, basically they have an eight-foot sign, they have a one and a half foot base that we don't typically count towards that eight feet. And administrative adjustment is up to me for up to 10% so they can actually get, they're going to do a 10-foot sign there. So it'll meet code.
So, all right, we're skipping that one.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? There we go. All right, site plans.
I love it when they listen to code, finally.
That's a good out. That's a good out.
You won, okay? You won. They said on board. I got you.
You mean, listen to Mr. Hetty, I mean.
All right. Site plans. Number one, major development plan, 3716 Hogshead Road. Owners: Laurel Bodega LLC, care of Sean Casey. Applicants: Dave Schmidt Engineering, Inc., care of Dave Schmidt PE. Location: 3716 Hogshead Road. Ms. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the 3716 Hogshead Road major development plan. The property is located south of Hogshead Road and west of Hermits Smith Road, surrounded by agricultural and industrial facilities. The applicant has submitted a major development plan for an industrial warehouse building approximately 2.99 acres in size. The building totals 30,080 square feet in area and with a proposed maximum height of 28.5 feet. While 61 parking spaces are required, the applicant is proposing 75 parking spaces with four accessible spaces. The applicant also proposes 31% of open space that includes a jogging path around the stormwater pond with bald cypress trees on the southern area of the project. The rest of the project area is embellished with live oak, American elm, and crepe myrtle trees and meets the landscaping requirements of the land development code. Here's the architectural rendering of the proposed building, and it meets the intent of the city's development design guidelines. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of 3716 Hogshead Road major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, I do. What kind of fence is going to be around this property?
They're permitted to have up to eight feet of chain-link fence.
Chain-link fence?
Correct. They're permitted to have up to eight feet tall of chain-link fence in industrial zone properties.
Is there any, is there, there's no residential next to this property, right?
I'm sorry?
There's no residential?
No, sir.
Any more questions of staff?
Did we have any?
Commissioner Doomey.
Mr. Chairman, did they indicate anything, what kind of businesses they intended to capture in these buildings?
They haven't indicated an user to staff yet. I believe the applicant is here. I'll defer that question to them.
By the way, the chain link that is allowed in industrial does have to be either powder-coated or vinyl-coated chain link, so just...
Sean Casey, Laurel Bodega, 3716 Hogshead Road. The tenant mix right now is undetermined. It's a spec warehouse. Yeah, we're looking for people that, we've had interest from subcontractors, you know, like one was an ice machine company, another was a plumber, and then one, we've turned down a couple ones that were more in manufacturing because we're light industrial.
Did you say ice? Did you say ice fishing?
Yes. You know, the, for like restaurants.
Oh, okay.
Ice machine.
Oh, I thought, I heard ice fishing.
You do realize we're in Florida, right?
That's what I was wondering. Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe I'm thinking of ice fishing. But, okay, thank you. Sounds like this will bring jobs to the area.
Yep.
The intent is to bring jobs and economic development, great.
All right. Any more questions of staff or the applicant? Thank you, sir. Anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, recommend approval of the 3716 Hogshead Road major development plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Norwood. Motion by Commissioner Norwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rendell. Thank you, Commissioner Rendell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number two, major development plan, Apopka Acorn Mixed Use. Owners: Ace Property LLC. Applicants: Lamb Civil Engineering, care of Quam Lamb PE. Location: 447 Alabama Avenue. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Apopka Acorn Mixed Use Development Major Development Plan. Property is located in the southeast corner of Main Street and Alabama Avenue. The major development plan proposes the development of commercial and multifamily uses. The applicant details live-worked dwellings with 28,020 square feet for commercial uses such as professional office, retail shops, and personal service establishments, sorry, on the ground floor and 19 multifamily units on upper floors. The proposed building height is 40 feet, while the maximum permitted height is 75 feet. The MDP also illustrates .29 acre pass of open space while .09 acres required. In addition to an opaque wall, southern live oaks and crepe myrtles line the southern boundary of the project as a buffer to the existing single-family residential used to the south. The proposed architectural renderings meet the intent of the development design guidelines. The DRC recommends approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Apopka Acorn Mixed Use Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, sir. What about parking?
Commissioner Washington.
It meets code, actually over. It meets code.
Yes, sir. The parking apologies that I, sure, I included it on there, and I will include it at the city council meeting, but it does meet parking. It was over-calculated actually for parking as well. Would you like the applicant?
And I know Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, sir.
He's going to ask about accessible parking, so what about that?
There's three spaces dead center.
Yeah, that's also over. The required parky is 42 space, or 72 spaces, and they're providing 74. A little bit of tidbit news. The site plan for the city center has shifted a little bit, and right now where this backs up to the city center property, they've moved the brewery and food hall backing up to this property, and you'll notice that we were actually able to provide a connection to that. So they'll actually benefit each other for the uses. This is like, I could say exactly what we're looking for for the downtown area.
And that's great, too.
Very complimentary.
Yeah, because it is compli, sorry, I'm sorry. But that is complimentary.
Oh, yeah.
And that the fact that now that our city center future tenants will have built-in guests, you know, basically onsite, customers.
Yep.
And I think this can only help build our economic opportunities inside the cities, and I like it.
Jim, will Hannah Stone and Starbucks still exist?
Starbucks has pulled out. They're looking at another brew company to come in along with another, I'm actually not supposed to say what they're, because I was told, but I can't, I don't have it written down anywhere, so I'm not obligated to tell you, but basically it is a coffee and a ice-type dessert company along with a, another major restaurant.
Is Hannah Stone still in?
I don't know. I don't think so.
No?
I don't think so, at least at this stage.
All right. Just wondering.
Any more questions of staff?
Yes, I've got one question. Explain to me what happened to the stormwater. I see there's some illustrations here, but tell me how that works.
It's underground, but I believe...
Yeah, it all goes underground to the stormwater system going over to Martin Pond, over, just over to the east. Same with, the majority of our downtown is all, is all going to Martin Pond in accordance with DEP and St. John's Water Management.
Okay. All right. Any more questions of staff?
None for me.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Apopka Acorn Mixed Use Development Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doomey. Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Site plan number three, plat, Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One. Owners: Galvin Land Services LLC, Patriot Equestrian LLC, Kelly Park Land Investments LLC 50%, and Harzick LLC 50%. Applicants: Polos and Bennett, care of Mark D. Steele PE. Location: North of Kelly Park Road, west of Epi Drive, and west of Round Lake Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One. The applicant has submitted for Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One plat for consideration, creating four lots, the entrance or spine road as well. And this plat creates the spine road track, row dash one, as well as lots one to four for multifamily on opposing sides of the road and a five-acre commercial tract. I don't know if y'all can recall this, the MDP was recently approved for what was considered Kelly Park property to the north. And down to the south towards Kelly Park Road, there are proposals for multifamily uses on... Applicants: Appian Engineering LLC, care of Luke Klassen PE. Location: four-four-seven six Plymouth Sorrento Road, thirty-one-point-nine-three acres. Ms. Sanchez?
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Apopka Acorn Mixed Use development, major development plan. Property is located on the southern terminus of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. Plat is consistent with the Winding Meadows North major development plan, approved by the city council on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The DRC recommends approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Winding Meadows North plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, I've got one question. Pointing to me what happens to the stormwater. I see there's some illustrations here, but tell me how that works.
It's underground, but I believe...
Yeah, it all goes underground to the stormwater system, going over to Martin Pond, over, just over to the east. Same with, the majority of our downtown is all, is all going to Martin Pond in accordance with DEP and St. John's Water Management.
Okay. All right. Any more questions of staff?
Not for me.
All right. Anyone from the public which should speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Apopka Acorn Mixed Use development, major development plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doomey. Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Site plan number three, plat, Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One. Owners: Galvin Land Services LLC, Patriot Equestrian LLC, Kelly Park Land Investments LLC, fifty percent, and Harskip LLC, fifty percent. Applicants: Polos and Bennett, care of Mark DeSteele PE. Location: north of Kelly Park Road, west of Effie Drive, and west of Round Lake Road. Ms. Sanchez?
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One. The applicant has submitted for Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One plat for consideration, creating four lots, the entrance or Spine Road as well. And this plat creates the Spine Road track, Row dash one, as well as lots one to four for multifamily on opposing sides of the road and a five-acre commercial tract. I don't know if y'all can recall this, the MDP was recently approved for what was considered Kelly Park property to the north. And down to the south towards Kelly Park Road, there are proposals for multifamily uses on both sides of the Spine Road. The DRC recommends approval of the Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One plat. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor. Staff is available for questions.
Anyone have questions of staff? Anyone from the public which should speak on this matter? Unless he gets up, that's it. That's your only option. All right. Bring it back for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the Kelly Park Multifamily Phase One plat, subject to the review of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lando. Motion by Commissioner Lando. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number four, plat, Winding Meadows North. Owners: PM dash S one Rio LLC. Applicants: Appian Engineering LLC, care of Luke Klassen PE. Location: four-four-seven six Plymouth Sorrento Road, thirty-one-point-nine-three acres. Ms. Sanchez?
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Winding Meadows North. The applicant has submitted the Winding Meadows North plat for consideration detailing eighty-five single-family detached homes. This project is a continuation of the first approved Winding Meadows subdivision development on the south, located on the southern terminus of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. Plat is consistent with the Winding Meadows North major development plan, approved by the city council on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The DRC recommends approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Winding Meadows North plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Seeing none, anyone from the public which should speak on this matter?